This regular meeting of the Navasota City Council's called to order on this eighth day of May, and council chambers let the record show all council members are present. Welcome and thank you for being here tonight. We ask that you put your cellphones in the silent mode. And a reminder to visitors, if you would please sign in, if you wish to speak under visitors' remarks, please fill out the forms found in back, state your name and address at the podium, as we must document all meeting business, and remarks limited to three minutes. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Mac Vaughn, then followed by the pledges.
Oh gracious God, we give you thanks. We give you thanks for this wonderful city that we all live in and that we socialize with folks in the county and the city. We thank you for the leadership that's been exhibited by this council, and we just give you thanks. We ask God this time of transition and change, that we thank Grant for his dedication that he had so many years here, and that we send him forth with a blessing. God, as we talk about the business of the city this evening, let our conversations be filled with grace. Let our conversations be filled with joy, and let us move forward into the next phase of what we want to be as a city. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Have no more.
No, sir.
We are very excited this evening to have a special presentation on behalf of the city of Navasota to recognize the top 10 graduates of Navasota High School for 2023. If you would, as I call your name, if you would, please come forward, and we will present you with a city proclamation. Whereas the Navasota High School class of 2023 will graduate on Friday, May 26th, and whereas the Navasota High School has recognized the following as its top 10 graduating seniors. Whereas Kylie Maxson, valedictorian, plans to attend May's Business School at Texas A&amp;M University and major in accounting. Whereas Robbie Morton, salutatorian, plans to attend Texas A&amp;M University. Avery McKinney plans to attend Texas A&amp;M University in the fall and pursue a degree in ag business. Dana Minya is currently enlisted in the Texas Army National Guard. She plans to attend Texas A&amp;M University on ROTC scholarship as a member of the Corps. She will major in environmental architectural design. After graduating, plans to commission as an officer in the US Army and pursue a career in architecture and interior design. Colin Conley plans to attend Texas A&amp;M University and study engineering. Seeley Sympton, I apologize if I say the name wrong, plans to attend Texas A&amp;M University to pursue a degree in agribusiness and compete on the Texas A&amp;M rodeo team. Emma Stankiewicz plans to double major in forestry and agriculture at Stephen F. Austin State University. At SFA, she hopes to join the Silvans, play in orchestra, and join the geology club. Leslie Soto plans to attend Texas A&amp;M University and pursue a degree in business management. Mallory Busa plans to attend Sam Houston State University and major in pre-veterinary medicine. Mackenzie Crawford plans to attend Texas A&amp;M to major in psychology, plans to get her, to one day get her PhD in psychology and become a clinical psychologist. Therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Burt Miller, Mayor of the city of Navasota, do hereby congratulate and recognize these fine students as top 10 seniors of the graduating class of 2023 from Navasota High School. The city of Navasota is proud of your accomplishments and wishes you and the best in your future endeavors. Signed this eighth day of May, 2023.
If any of the parents want to come up and take pictures, y'all can come up a little closer.
Do y'all want to, one, like, form like a secondary line and hump a bit closer together? Yeah, I think, there we go, that was kind of filed in the middle of.
[laughing]
All right, let's go.
All right.
City needs us.
Sorry, I was out.
Let's have a proclamation this evening recognizing Economic Development Week, May 8th through May 13th. development organization dedicated to serving economic developers. And the International Economic Development Council provides leadership and excellence in economic development for communities, members, and partners through conferences, training courses, advisory services, and research, in-depth publications, public advocacy, and initiatives such as the Accredited Economic Development Organization Program, Certified Economic Developers Designation, and the Entrepreneurship Development Professional. Economic developers provide economic well-being and quality of life for their communities by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. And whereas economic developers stimulate and incubate entrepreneurism in order to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is the hallmark of the American economy. Whereas economic developers are engaged in a wide variety of settings, including rural and urban, local, state, provincial, and federal governments, public-private partnerships, chambers of commerce, universities, and a variety of other institutions. Economic developers attract and retain high-quality jobs, develop vibrant communities, and improve the quality of life in their regions. Economic developers work in the city of Navasota within the state of Texas. Be it resolved, I, Burt Miller, Mayor of the city of Navasota, do recognize the week of May 9th through 13th as Economic Development Week, and remind individuals of the importance of this community celebration, which supports expanding career opportunities and making lives better. Signed this eighth day of May.
All right.
We're good at sign language.
Mayor, while you're finding your place, the next item, I'm going to have Peggy Johnson come up and introduce a new employee.
Madam Miller, council members, Peggy Johnson, HR Director, this evening I would like to introduce you to our new employee, John McKay, was hired on Monday, last Monday, May 1st, as a graduate civil engineer, engineer in the Public Works Department. John grew up in Georgetown and graduated from Texas A&amp;M in 2015 with a degree in civil engineering. He spent five years as an engineer and project manager for oil and gas terminal projects. In 2020, John and his wife, Rizes Valley native, moved back to the area, and he began working with law engineering. Since then, he has worked with many local communities on designing and building infrastructure projects, including Navasota. He has joined us as a graduate engineer, expecting to become a fully licensed city engineer this summer. John has worked with our team frequently and is excited to continue serving with them. So I would like to introduce to you Mr. John McKay.
Welcome aboard. Yeah, Mayor, Council, you'll see a lot more of John doing presentations before you and working with us on a lot of our public projects, as well as doing plan reviews for our private projects. Next item, Peggy's going to present our Years of Service Award.
Madam Miller and council members, the city of Navasota would like to congratulate Edwin Sandoval on his 15 years of service. On May 28, 2008, he began his career with the city of Navasota as a utility laborer in our Public Works Department, Utility Department. Positions Mr. Sandoval held are: gas locator technician, truck driver. On March 4, 2021, he was promoted to a heavy equipment operator and a truck driver in the Public Works Street and Sanitation Department. So with this certificate of achievement, we would like to present it to Edwin Sandoval in appreciation of 15 years of dedicated services to the city of Navasota. You can do it.
Thank you, Edwin.
I don't think I've ever seen him without a smile.
He's a hard worker. Mayor, next, I'm going to have Jennifer Raina come up and give an update on our CIP projects.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Council. Jennifer Raina, Public Works Director. I'm going to give you just a brief update on just a few of our capital improvement projects. First is our 2020 Street and Utilities Capital Improvement Project. We actually are going to be starting this project on May the 24th. This is the multimillion-dollar, big project with all the utilities in the streets replacement. Again, that's going to begin May the 24th with a target completion date of July 2024. So a whole full year to complete this big project. The fire hydrant replacement project, we are moving pretty well on this project. We are still averaging about five fire hydrant replacements a week. So what we'll do is, every week, we give an update of the areas of the fire hydrants that we're replacing. We'll post a weekly post on Facebook. So you'll see the areas of any water allergies that we may have on these fire hydrants replacements. So I would suggest everybody to take a look at Facebook for most current posts for the fire hydrant replacement project. And then we have the sewer and water utility for the north end of the airport. We have the project design and contracts documents that will be completed by May the 19th. So what that is, is blow engineering and city staff are currently reviewing the designs of that project. And once that's finished, we'll go out for advertisement. So we're shooting for the date of May 24th to start advertising for this project. And then once that's done, we'll do a bid opening on May the 8th, excuse me, June the 8th, we'll do a bid opening for this project. And then we'll bring it to council June the 26th to award on that one. I think that's all I have on.
How's your testing with AWAS?
AWAS is good. We'll steer, we have a backorder on the data systems.
Ah, perfect.
So I have no control on that.
Yeah.
And I do apologize. But it is, it is up and going. It is up and going. Anything else? Thank y'all.
Mayor, Council, also, we're going to be, Jennifer, I'm going to be working really closely with Bobby to start working on a press release related to our, the major utility and street project, as well as our street maintenance. So we'll be including the maps. The idea is to have, and also try to not only push it out through social media, put it out on our website. We'll get with the examiner. We'll also try to push that out if we can find a way to get it all within our utility bill. Maybe do a flyer with a map on the back and one on the front.
In the 20, excuse me, the, the street maintenance project with Knife River should be starting almost at the same time as the CIP project for the streets and utilities. So we're going to get Knife River and the other contractor together and kind of have a construction meeting when we get started on that as well.
We'll push something out that'll have, it'll have both, it'll have both projects on there, so that not to get everybody confused, that it'll have on there about the, the major project, what's covering streets, as well as the maintenance project. And like some alerts at times on when they're going to be working on certain areas? Yes, we definitely, we're going to be, we're going to get both contractors together and have a meeting so that we can make sure we're all on the same page and have a regular meeting. And I'm sure you thought of this, but just thinking about Neal Street as a thoroughfare for school traffic, that we would try to work on that during the summer?
We're, we're going to work on that when the school's out. So that's the first area. We're going to start on May the 24th, and we're going to probably be in that area first.
Perfect.
So right after school lets out, we're going to focus on those areas that will be affected.
Is there a possibility to have maybe that map like on the website or something?
Yes, we're going to.
So that when people question us about which street, I think they will.
We're going to put it everywhere.
We have a full map for you to see.
Yes, we will be pushing the map out for sure.
We can have it posted here at City Hall. We'll have it on our Facebook page and on our website.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Maybe, maybe the examiner, we can maybe get it in there too. Press their arm. Any reports from council on boards and commissions? All right. Point of information, the Navasota Citizens University is having their session on the fire department tomorrow, I believe. Coffee with the Chamber is Wednesday, 9:00 AM at the P.A. Smith Hotel. Citizens University with Planning and Zoning and Development Services was Thursday, right?
Correct.
And this, this Friday, actually, the city of Navasota and Vice President of Region 14, Ms. Patty Peterson, will be hosting the Region, TML's, Texas Municipal League Region 14 Spring Meeting at the P.A. Smith Hotel. We'll have folks from all, all over the region here in Navasota visiting.
Give me a bright day.
So. And we've got a couple of different performances coming up. We've got the Theater Alliance's last showing of "Lend Me a Tenor" is Thursday, Friday, and Saturday this week.
Yes, Friday at 7:00, and then two matinees. Matinee at 2:00 on Saturday, as well as Sunday.
And then the Navasota High School Theater's got guys and dolls on the same nights.
Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at 7:00 at Brozey.
So you'll have some options and do both. And just as a reminder, we rolled out navasotajobs.com here just recently, and you can, as a business owner, go in there and get registered, or also as an employment seeker as well, visit navasotajobs.com. Mayor, Council, also want to remind everybody that this week is Public Service Recognition Week. So each day, we'll be honoring a different department on our social media site. So be sure to like that and share that. And then on Friday, we will be having a breakfast at 7:00 AM with our staff here. And, and we've got a lot of new staff, so we'll be introducing some staff. There's going to be some awards, too, to be given out to some staff members as well.
The Grimes County Resource Center is going to be opening on Thursday. Did you say that?
No, I did not.
Okay. I was looking at my calendar. I was like, there's something else. The Grimes County Resource Center is opening a closet for.
Closed closet, yeah.
For the community at the hospital. And their grand opening is from 5:30 to 7:00, and I believe they will be open on Mondays from 10:00 to 2:00, if you'd like to make a donation, or if you know that anyone that's in need.
Mayor and City Council, I'd just like to remind everyone that we are going to be having a special meeting on Monday at 12:00 noon to canvass the election results. And we'll also have a little reception for Grant Hope, which will be his last meeting. And then we'll swear in the new member, James Harris.
That's again, when?
Monday the 15th at 12:00 noon.
And this Saturday, Kid Fish. Don't forget, we bring the kids out to Patto Pond. Believe the Lions Club will be providing, I think, the snow cones and hot dogs, I think, or something. They're giving away something, so. Farmer's Market is on Saturday? And then, is the Farmer's Market already? Again, yeah. Wow. Yeah, Farmer's Market's at 18. Looks like it's been a month already. Yes, the Farmer's Market again, that will be Saturday as well. That's from, I mean, that's from. Nine to 12. Nine to 12, and then Kid Fish is from 8:00 to 12:00. So you can do both there. Don't forget Mom on Sunday. regarding an application submitted by Ricky Hux to the city of Navasota requesting to abandon a 20-foot public alleyway located in Block 66 of the H&amp;T C Railroad Edition in the city of Navasota, Grimes County, Texas, followed by discussion and possible action of whether to consider action on the first reading of ordinance 1020-23 to abandon a 20-foot public alleyway located in Block 66 of the H&amp;T C Railroad Editions in Navasota. And we'll open the hearing at 6:23.
Mayor, City Council, good evening. Lupe Josado, Development Services Director. Just to briefly summarize, staff received a request to abandon right of way or alleyway from Ricky Hux. He is present tonight. He did complete all his due diligence, all his homework. So he did get consent, obviously, from our public work, public work staff. There's no utilities underground in the area. And he also got consent from power company and internet and cable company. So he did provide a survey of the alleyway and the legal descriptions. So if the closure is approved, then legal counsel will also assist in drafting those deeds to each abutting property owner. And like I said, Ricky is here tonight, if y'all have any questions, or myself.
If you wanted to speak, this is your opportunity, and if you'd like to, and it's totally up to you.
Hi, Ricky Hux, resident of Grimes County, property owner, live in King Oaks, asking the city council to abandon this little alleyway that's abuts our property that's off of North 8th Street for potential future development for mixed use or multifamily-type development. It has not gone through engineering yet or architectural. I've worked with Raina and Lupe and asked, and am seeking their guidance on suggestions on what would be an appropriate improvement for the city. I love the, the way the P.A. Smith Hotel looks. I'd like to, I don't know about replicate that, but complement that. So I don't know how it may look. So I'm here to answer any questions.
Is that land in floodplain?
There is a portion of the land that is in the floodplain. Half of it is and half of it isn't. But I don't know floodplain very well. It's not the portion of the floodplain that requires insurance, but there is a smidgen of, of problem with that.
Yeah, there's a, there's probably like 20% of it, but it's in the 2%, so very, very low risk.
So you own the property on both the north and the south side of the alleyway?
No.
Only the south.
Just the south side.
Okay. And so if we abandon an alleyway, doesn't one property owner get half and the other get half?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And any idea why that was there? Why that was listed as an alleyway?
I think.
We got a lot of those around.
Yeah, it's the H&amp;T C addition, so that, that addition goes all the way back to the founding.
When they laid it, when they laid it out, they laid it out uniformly so that it was an alleyway and everything.
Mm-hmm.
10, 10 lots.
Sure, there was a horse through there at some point.
You own the rag?
[laughing]
Who owns the property the north of it?
Alberta Lopez. I think you did make contact with her.
I did. I actually went to Mrs. Lopez's residence and spoke with her, explained to her the situation, what I was attempting to do, asked for her consent. I left some paperwork, the drawings that I had from the city council, not for city council, from the appraisal district, showing her specifically what I was attempting to do with city council and this abandonment. And she was ambivalent towards it. She didn't give me yes or no. I said, well, call me if you have any questions. I followed up with a couple of phone calls with her, left a couple voicemails. She never returned my call. She didn't say yes or no.
So if we abandon it and she obtains this new half of the property, then does that mean that her taxes potentially go up by a small amount? Yeah.
Yeah, whatever the, whatever the praise value is of that 10-foot strip.
Yeah. And we, and the city hasn't heard from her either?
No, sir.
And we have no obligation to reach out to her if we're going to approve this?
Well, that's part of the due diligence on the application. So we put all of the, I guess, duties on the applicant to reach out to all the various property owners and companies. And so there's even a, there's even a field in there that says, you know, let's say he knocked on the door three times and she never answered the door, then that's notated on there and that's sufficient.
Okay. So the obligation doesn't come onto the city, it comes onto the property owner requesting it?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's Bader. It's right there.
For the most part, these people are already claiming their property, using yours.
It's Bader. It's just a little alleyway right there.
And you said you're looking at, at different possibilities as far as maybe like rental, rental-type housing?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Multifamily or townhomes, or, you know, mixed use, first, first floor be, you know, retail, and the top floor or two floors, we build a three-story building there, being residential. Much similar to the downtown-looking projects, you know, that are, kind of continue with that theme, is, is the goal here.
Yeah, and I'm sure they've told you that our need for rental property is great.
Yes, yes. Raina made that explicitly clear. I'm listening.
That's good. That's great. And just out of curiosity, how did you get the property? You bought it or inherited or?
I purchased it. Yes, sir.
I don't know if it was family or something like that.
No, it's not family.
Okay, anyone wish to speak to this item? Okay, anyone wish to speak to this item? Okay. We'll close the hearing at 6:29.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the first reading of ordinance 1020-23.
Second. Motion by Mr. Holt, second by Mr. Gessler to approve. And I hit the X and I can't see it on my screen, so I can't just.
I have it here.
To approve the ordinance number 1020-23, abandoning a 20-foot public alleyway located in Block 66 of the HNTC Railroad Edition in Navasota, Texas. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Seeing none, item carries.
You felt the pressure. It's coming up.
There it is. Item six is consideration of possible action on resolution 736-23 regarding requested annexation petition submitted by Stanley Kettler and Jeanette Welch for 1.909 acre tract of land in the Jesse B. McNeely survey, A44, located in Grimes County, Texas, 77868, setting a time, date, and place for a public hearing on a proposed annexation of said property by the city of Navasota.
Mayor and city council, to again briefly summarize, so these next three resolutions all relate to the same project. Since early last year, myself, just various members, I mean, this project really has been kind of all hands on deck. We've been working with Grimes Altamira for a development of approximately 400 lot subdivision along Highway 90. And so over the last several weeks and months, we've been meeting with the property owners that would make that property contiguous to our city limits. I think last week, we finally got the third signature in, and so everything kind of lined up with perfect timing with these few council meetings. And so we did receive the approved service plans from all three property owners, as well as signed petitions requesting annexation. The, let's see. Obviously, the recommendation from staff is to approve these resolutions, and this will set in motion the next steps, which is notifying public entities, putting an ad in the examiner on our website, and preparing for the May 22 meeting, which will be ordinances and public hearings. So I said, if y'all have any questions, can answer those. And it's been one heck of a project.
Mayor and Council, the date for the public hearings will be on May 22, which is your next regular scheduled meeting at 6 o'clock. So all three of those will be held that day. Myself, Lupe, and Raina will be out of town that day. So if you have any questions about this development, I encourage you tonight to ask those questions for staff that would be able to answer those. As a reminder, this is the connection to annex the 400 acres in. This is where our planned water tower is going to be going, as well as our water plant that we talked about tonight during the workshop. And so there is significant pieces that you have to do. So the way it's laid out here is the way, the order you have to do it, because you can't annex the last piece before the first piece. And so technically, the Kettlers and the Welch is the first piece. Your next item on the agenda is going to be Jinx Lee's property. And then the last one will be Altamira LLC, which is the applicant that will be building the 400 homes. As a reminder, those homes are going to be similar to what's already been built in Jim Hassel's development out in Pecan Lakes with the builders' style craft and-
Reese's.
Reese's Homes. I will let you also know that, you know, Chandler is wanting to jump on this as quickly as possible to get this up and going. Staff's already been working really closely with Blile Engineering to, you know, number one, identify the location for our water plant and water well, as well as working on the tower piece. The developer is willing to allow us to use part of the property there. So if approved and everything works out like it should, later on down the road, you'll be seeing what we consider development agreements to come in place. The idea is also, once these annexations are, if they are approved, then we will be coming to you later on this year to increase our TERS. So the tax increment reinvestment zone will need to be increased all the way out to this area as well, because the plan is to allow the TERS as a way to put in some of the infrastructure out at this location. The developer has indicated that there's possible two commercial locations on each side of the main road coming into there. Has not talked about what that could be. When we actually are going to ICSC in a couple of weeks, this is some of the things we would love to be able to tell them that's coming. Developers love to see that you're planning for the future, you're going to, you can provide resources financially to attract some developments and provide some reimbursements back for infrastructure, as well as making sure that you have utilities capable of providing services to that side of town where growth is going to start occurring. And so this is just one of those steps to get there. And like Lupe mentioned, since I've been here, this is a project that we've been working on several times a month, working to make sure that we came a long way. And we see the goal line there. We're right there at it. So again, if you have any questions, please ask that tonight of staff so we can make sure that we provide you enough answers.
Would you be available the 22nd for?
We can make sure that we are available by telephone if we need to be. We understand that this is very important.
Yeah, I think I would have a telephone handy. If you're not going to Mars, you'll be available.
And this also has implications too with another adjoining piece of property that is also looking at being developed even further east, even larger.
Correct. So as a reminder, council, you took action on opposing any municipal utility districts in the city limits or in our ETJ. As a reminder, if approved, each one of these steps increases our city limits, which increases our ETJ area. With the projected last item on here to be annexed in, that will produce another mile outside on 90, which would encompass nearly 90% of the proposed mud that was wanting to come in this area, which will require them, once they actually go to TCEQ or to the legislature and request for the creation of a mud, they would have to come to the city council for approval. So this is a step to be able to control development, control what's going to happen, and how Navasota's going to grow.
Are we prepared to provide service to that?
We are, again, the developer is, I think, pretty close to gaining all the right-of-way for the utilities to the site. We issued bonds, we've got the debt, we've got funds for the water tower. This is the last piece to be able to say go. And once this goes, we will start developing. So the idea is to have the water tower up probably before even houses are even being built. Number one, that will start providing us additional water services and pressure to that side of town that needs some, especially the high school and those businesses there. We're ready to go. Yes, ma'am.
So this does two things. It provides a corridor for the utilities, and it provides the link, however tenuous, to authorize the annexation, because it has to be contiguous.
Yes, sir. And the reason it's 20 feet is we requested so it provide gas, water, and sewer capabilities to loop that system. So the developer is going to bring the lines up to the development. The city, if, so if we know we're going to need development outside of that area, and we need a 12-inch line, but only for his line, he only needs 8 inches, then we would need to be really responsible for that uptick. But once it gets to that location, at some point, as development occurs on those 400 homes, and then if the 1,200 acres decides to start being developed, we're going to need to loop that system. And by having this property here, this linkage through here, this 20-foot area-
Gives us that connection.
Gives us connection to the Dove Crossing area.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve resolution 736-23.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Holt, second by Mr. Gessler to approve resolution 736-23. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Seeing none, item carries.
You got it. You got two more.
You have 14 more.
Nice try.
Just say ditto and stick a different name in there.
I had a feeling they were going to be approved, but.
This is now resolution seven, consideration of possible action on resolution 737-23 regarding annexation petition submitted by Jinx M. Lee for a 0.336 acre tract of land in Jesse B. McNeely survey, A44, located in Grimes County, Texas, 77868, setting a time, date, and place for a public hearing on proposed annexation of said property by the city of Navasota.
So mayor and council, same as before, this is the next linkage in that annexation strip. And this is for 0.336 acres, which was petitioned by Mr. Jinx M. Lee.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution 737-23.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Holt, second by Mr. Gessler to approve resolution 737-23. Any further discussion?
Mayor and council also wanted to let you know that the developer has been in contact with, the way that this was sold to Jinx Lee is a great idea. He actually went and took all of Jinx Lee's property and showed him what he could develop. So he actually prepared like a mock site plan and showed him, here's what you can get for your property once we are, if we try to develop it.
It makes it more valuable.
Correct. And so I could see at some point, not guaranteed, at some point, the developer ends up purchasing this property from Jinx Lee and developing it as well.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed? Seeing none, item carries. Item number eight, consideration of possible action on resolution 738-23 regarding the requested annexation petition submitted by Grimes Altamira LLC for a 96.618 acre tract of land in the Jesse B. McNeely survey, A44, located in Grimes County, Texas, 77868, setting a date, time, and place for a public hearing on a proposed annexation of said property by the city of Navasota.
Hi, mayor. So the last 96.618 acre piece for the annexation. So following all the annexation procedures, then the next step will be going through the zoning process. And I know the developer's kind of already alluded that they'll probably go through a planned unit development, similar to the other projects we've seen in town, so.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve resolution 738-23.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Holt, second by Mr. Gessler to approve resolution 738-23. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Seeing none, item carries.
Thank y'all.
Now you're done. Consideration of possible action on a contract between the city of Navasota and Weisinger Incorporated in the amount of $129,438 for the purchase of materials and associated items related to the emergency repairs to water well number four located at 6559 Link Drive as authorized by section 252.022A3 Texas Government Code as a procurement necessary because of unforeseen damage to public machinery, equipment, or other property.
Good evening, mayor and council. Jennifer Rannup of the Corks Director. Actually, John McKay has requested to present these two items, so I'm going to let him just jump on in and start doing his job.
Good evening, mayor and council. John McKay, graduate civil engineer. First off, it's great to be on the team. But this first agenda item here, it is for well four. It's down kind of in the industrial park area. It's a fairly large well. I know earlier we were trying to get a feel for sizing. This one's about 300 to 350 gallons per minute. It can do about 550 homes. So this well, it's got a 24-year-old pump in it, the pump and the motor on it, both, when they went out, we got a fault failure, we went ahead and pulled them, televised the well, and noticed that it's really scaled up really bad. So while it's out of there, before we go spend money to put new machinery in, we do want to go ahead and rehab that well at the same time. It's really no different than a showerhead faucet. First, you try to scrub it down real good, and if that doesn't get the scale off of it, you go ahead and soak it in the vinegar equivalent, pull all that back out, get all the minerals out of there, set your new pump, and you get a lot more efficiency out of it that way. So this is requesting, I know on the agenda, it says 122 and change. That's actually a mistype. It's the contract value would be 129,438 is the quote that we got in.
Mayor and council, I'll let Luke speak to what's allowed. So if you remember back when, during the winter storm, when our wastewater treatment plant, we had some-
It was the large clarifier?
The clarifiers froze up. It caused a lot of damage without, and the cost of that was over $50,000, which would require us to bid it. However, there is an exception in the local government code that when it is an emergency purchase for these type things, we can forego those type purposes. So the reason you have it on this agenda is because it's over $50,000, and also claiming that exemption for having to bid it, because this is related to our water system without these two, this item and your next item as well, without the water well being fixed, we're going to be without some water services here. So that's why we're authorized under that section.
Yes, sir. Yeah. Everything Jason said, correct.
Mr. Mayor, I move-
I can't hear his. Speak for him.
I'm fine by it. I'm like, this is great. Have at it.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the contract between the city of Navasota and Weisinger Inc. in the amount of $129,438 in order to purchase of materials associated with items for the emergency repairs to the water well number four located at 6559 Link Drive as authorized by section 2.52.022A3 Texas Local Government Code.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Holt, second by Ms. Peterson to approve the contract between the city of Navasota and Weisinger Inc. for $129,438, materials and associated items for emergency repairs to water well number four. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Seeing none, item carries. Item 10, consideration of possible action on a contract between the city of Navasota and Weisinger Inc. for the amount of $98,103 for purchase of materials and associated items related to the emergency repairs to water well number seven located at 11167 County Road 451, authorized by section 252.022 Texas Local Government Code as a procurement necessary because of unforeseen damage to public machinery, equipment, or other property.
Mayor and city council, this is another well that has recently failed. This is down south of town. It's actually our heaviest lifter. It's our biggest well. It's about 600 gallons per minute. Again, just trying to give you a good feel. It provides for about 1,000 homes is what it has the capability for. So we need to get this one back up and running. It's a bigger motor, so you're seeing less work, but a similar price tag. It's double the size of the motor. We lucked out on this one. The pump portion itself, all these, they have their motor, and then they have the machinery that actually lifts the water up. We lucked out on this one, um, the pump portion itself, all these, they have their motor, and then they have the machinery that actually lifts the water up, and the machinery that lifted the water up was in pretty good shape, it can be rebuilt, not fully replaced. The well itself was in pretty good shape, it doesn't need work, so we're really looking at getting a big motor and some work to rebuild out that pump.
How does one discover that these are not working? Is there an alarm, or is it?
There's an alarm through the SCADA system.
So it would almost be immediate that this would fail, we would know that it failed, not that it's been operating for twenty-four, forty-eight hours.
No, these, these motors failed completely, they, they're, they were gone.
Right, but I mean, we knew about it immediately.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm curious too, on the, on both of them, um, did the, did the motors live their expected life expectancy?
Wells fours definitely did, and it was about twenty-four years old, so it's, I mean, most cars don't go that long either. Uh, well, seven is a little bit younger, it's about thirteen years. There's still some debate on what's going on, was it lightning, was it just power at the end of the line? That is at the end of a power line, so you always get a little bit of dirty electricity in there. So it may be as simple as that.
So there's a possibility, maybe we could have an insurance claim on it, maybe?
I'm sure we could.
Probably not.
No, okay.
Well, actually Peggy's looking into it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're gonna, we're gonna try.
We'll see what we can do.
No, I'm just gonna report said something about thrust bearing joint out, Danny, comment on that?
Comment on that, so that is the part that, that's what actually caused some of the rebuild damage required in the pump itself. That thrust bearing had gone out, and what it had done, these pumps are, they really look kind of similar to like the immersion, immersion blender that you use to make guacamole. It's just a whole bunch of those in a line, and it pushes the water up through it instead of just mixing it around. And there's a bearing at the top that kind of holds that all suspended, and when that had gone out, the blender, the blender blades had hit the next bolt in line and caused some damage, so that's what's needing to be rebuilt.
Do you have an idea how long that rebuilding and replacing goes?
It's for well seven, we're thinking about four weeks, for well four, we're thinking about six weeks.
And we're down?
Those two, yes.
Because of it?
We're not, we're not.
Not struggling at this moment, but we will be in the summertime if this is not taken care of.
Six weeks puts it at the middle of June, so we're wanting to get a, get a handle on it.
Kind of an emergency, yeah.
Yep.
What kind of, it is. Dang emergency. Mister Mayor, I move that we approve the contract between the city of Navasota and Weisinger Inc. in the amount of ninety-eight thousand one hundred and three dollars for the purchase of materials and associated items related to the emergency repairs to water well number seven located at one 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 six seven County Road four five one as authorized by section two five two point zero two two A three, Texas Local Government Code. Motion by Mister Holt, second by Miss Peterson to approve the ninety-eight thousand one hundred and three dollars for material and associated items for water well number seven. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. Just a question, uh, what was I gonna say? Oh, um, Weisinger, I, I'm assuming it's someone we're fairly familiar with that we've.
Actually, we have them here, we brought them to, uh, we have BJ here. Sir, how long have you been working on our water wells?
Oh, thirty years. Yeah, we work for the city, I'm BJ Aldrich, by the way, I worked with the city, worked with them for a long time. I've been employed about forty years, well, forty years, so, uh, real familiar with the water system, worked on both these wells in my past, and so. You have any questions?
Yeah, I appreciate you being here tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
We appreciate y'all, uh, getting it done, and we're gonna get on it and get y'all tended to.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks a lot.
Thank y'all.
Item eleven, consideration of possible action on the first reading of ordinance ten twenty-two dash twenty-three authorizing the settlement of the proposed rate increase of Entergy Texas Incorporated.
Mayor and Council, if you'll remember, um, back last July, Entergy Texas filed a statement of intent for changing their rate structure. Uh, that effective date should have been August fifth of last year, however, um, we asked for you to suspend that, and so council approved that suspension for an additional ninety days, uh, which was, uh, up through November third. Uh, so, um, the Lawton Law Firm, the, the firm that all of our, um, member cities joined with to go with this, uh, request to suspend them, to look at their rate structure, uh, we predicted that, you know, their, the rates they were proposing were a little too high, so, um, their experts and everything started looking at that, uh, they've, uh, the summary of their findings, uh, was that Entergy's application was reasonable, um, and, um, but, uh, uh, on April twenty-fifth, Lawton Law Firm, uh, let us know that they were, reached an agreement. Uh, they believe that, um, the request, that the original request was too much, of course, so the amounts actually came down. Uh, E- Energy agreed to a revenue requirement increase of fifty-four million, which is around a fifty-eight point nine percent lower than their original request. Uh, in addition to that, uh, well, their original request was a hundred and thirty-one million rate increase, so significant, uh, reduction based on, uh, Lawton Law Firm coming in and, uh, using their experts to, um, let them know that it was a little bit too high. Uh, I won't go through all the specifics, I have that in, in the write-up there, I will let you know that, uh, Lawton Law Firm let us know that, you know, based on any further litigation, they just don't think they'll be able to get it down any further, uh, so they are requesting, uh, a settlement in the case, and how does that represent, um, our, our residents? And so within the, the packet there, uh, table one provided what the proposed settlement allocations were, the change in the non-fuel revenues and the change in the total revenues, I won't bore you with all of that information. Table two is comparison of average monthly bills, and so that's one I'll kind of hit on. So residential, um, uh, users using a hun, a thousand kilowatt hours, so a resident that uses the average of a thousand kilowatt hour, hours, uh, there will be an increase of six dollars and thirty-five cents per month, or four dollars and fifty-one percent, uh, percent increase in their current rates. So, uh, someone using a thousand kilowatt hours, Energy's, uh, present rates would be a hundred and forty dollars and eighty-one cent bill. Uh, the proposed settlement would bring that to a hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixteen cents. Uh, how, what that means in the settlement is, they originally, the original proposal would have brought it up to a hundred and fifty-four dollars. So, again, significant, uh, decrease, uh, Lawton Law Firm, uh, again, is, uh, recommending, as well as city staff, council approving, uh, the, um, the attached ordinance that were provided by Lawton Law Firm, ordinance number, uh, ten twenty-two dash twenty-three, uh, which is, uh, the settlement of the proposed rate increase of Entergy.
And what happens if, if we, I mean, clearly I understand, but what happens if we don't agree to it, and just, because we've signed the letter agreeing to the Lawton, now we, we owe it back to them, so to speak?
So, um, I could either bring this to you for, um, for, for approval, or not bring it to you and means there's, it's gonna be settled. That, what I'm trying to tell you, there, it is you saying, Lawton Law Firm, we're, we're good with you, what you did, thank you, um, thank you for working for, for our residents and trying to bring, not only residents, but our, also our, our businesses as well, as well as the industrial, uh, rates. So, um, you know, again, it's a significant decrease from what the proposal was, um, we denied it at first, you can deny this ordinance, but it's not gonna, it's not gonna do anything related to.
Either way, nothing happens, really.
Anyway, nothing, residency is gonna increase four, four, four points.
Either way, it will go up.
It will go up.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at.
Yes, yes, sir. Okay.
Now approved first reading of ordinance ten twenty-two dash twenty-three.
Second.
Motion by Mister Holt, second by Mister Gesner to approve first reading ordinance ten twenty-two dash twenty-three. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. Item twelve, consideration possible action on Resolution seven thirty-nine dash twenty-three authorizing city representatives in matters pertaining to the city's participation in the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program.
Mayor, City Council, Avet Fanning, Grants Coordinator, um, this resolution is to give the mayor and the city manager, um, the authority to execute a grant application and the sequential contract that goes with the TDA application. And it also gives me, myself, and the finance director the ability to, um, handle all of the finance side of things if we were to receive the grant.
Mister Mayor, I move we approve Resolution number seven three nine dash two three. Motion by Mister Holt, second by Miss Peterson to approve Resolution seven twenty, seven thirty-nine dash twenty-three. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed?
Thank y'all.
Item thirteen, consideration of possible action on the first reading of ordinance ten twenty-one dash twenty-three amending code of ordinances, appendix A, fee schedule, article A four point zero zero zero, Parks and Recreation, section A four zero zero nine, adopting the revised Parks and Recreation Municipal Pool Fees for the city of Navasota with an effective date of May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Amending code of ordinances, appendix A with the addition of article A six point zero 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 miscellaneous fees, section A six point zero zero one F, credit card processing fees, to cover cost of credit card processing fees with an effective date of May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three.
Mayor, City Council, Ryan Hendricks, Parks and Rec Manager, um, city of Navasota adopted fees for the municipal pool back in two thousand fourteen, those fees are currently in effect today. Due to the pool renovations and price inflation on chemicals and operational costs, there's a need to adjust the fees accordingly. However, staff are recommending prices and fees for services that are competitive with neighboring cities. Therefore, revision is needed to reflect the proposed pricing fee in the code of ordinances. Navasota Municipal Pool has gone over a series of renovation expenses that were expected and unexpected during two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. New plumbing filters, pumps, chemical controls are just something to mention, professional labor costs to install that equipment and to clean our pools was yet another expense, in addition, the cost of chemicals to keep our water clean, sanitized, and safe for swimming have gone up, and, uh, be competitive with neighboring cities with lifeguards, our pay rates have also increased. All these expenses are justified in their very own way, and have been necessary to, to ensure the grand reopening of the Navasota Municipal Pool. Although the pricing and fees will never cause the municipal pool to break even, um, we have to do our due diligence to equalize that, close the gap.
Um, good evening Mister Mayor and City Council, Raina Tashara, Economic Development Director, um, also going on, um, this ordinance would be the revision to the miscellaneous fees for credit card processing fees. Um, and so the city of Navasota uses multiple different platforms for fee and payment collection, um, that have the ability for online credit card payment. And so, um, one of the examples that we've been looking into, um, is that the city uses Stripe as an online platform where customers pay for their, um, their online fees for deposits for utility setups, vendor fees for the farmer's market, um, vendor fees for Texas Birthday Bash, and then also deposits for, um, Parks and Recreation and facility room rentals. Um, and so on this platform, the customer only pays the face value of that deposit or fee, and so then, when it comes to payout collection, um, Stripe actually takes that processing fee on the side of the city, so making this, um, revision to the miscellaneous fees will allow us to, um, pass along those fees onto the consumer, uh, not to exceed five percent, and so, um, if this is able to move forward, then staff will work on making those revisions specifically on that platform, um, to make sure that that's passed along to the consumer.
What's our current rate?
Yep.
The current rate for?
For the, for the credit cards.
Um.
Two dollars, I think, a dollar fifty, two dollars?
I believe, I know on the Stripe platform, it's, um, they take.
Percentage?
Around, it's, they, they have a fixed fee, I believe it's thirty cents, um, and then plus three percent.
Thirty percent, okay.
And people still have a way to pay in person?
Yes.
Yes, correct, you can pay in person, check, yeah, yes, sir.
On the, uh, the fees for the swimming pool, uh, we have a proposed fee of fifty dollars for water fitness, and yet it's not in the, uh, in the ordinance.
So I proposed a water fitness pass fee to stay competitive with neighboring cities, 'cause they offer that to their citizens.
Right, but it's, it's in our, it's in, in your comparison listing, but then when we come to the actual write-up of the, of the ordinance, it's not listed in there.
It'd, it'd be in addition.
And the total fee for the party rental is four fifty, is that the, the one fifty for the, uh, deposit and then the three hundred?
Correct.
Okay, so there's not, there's not another hundred and fifty involved?
I have a question on the, if you can, on the city of Brian's pricing. It's an individual season pass of two hundred dollars or two hundred and fifty, what is the or?
Uh, that's for resident and non-resident. So the two fifty would be for someone like Navasota to go up there and get a season pass.
On the, the hours, uh, I know this isn't actually in the ordinance, but it says the, the times for the operation, Saturday, Tuesday through Saturday, from one P M. to seven P M. And then Tuesday through Saturday from seven to eight P M.
So that, that one to seven will be for public swim, and the seven to eight will be for in services for the lifeguards and that fitness pass? So if we were gonna have a fitness class like water aerobics or just lap swim, that would be the hour dedicated to them, so they wouldn't have to deal with the public? That makes sense.
So that would be a separate entrance fee, as it were?
Correct, or they can get the water pass set, we'd like to have.
Have we hired enough lifeguards yet?
I wish.
I was hoping you'd say yay.
Yes, yes.
The pool is open.
It is.
That's good. I'm very excited about that.
Not today, but.
Well.
Yeah, yeah.
Obviously.
So do we need to add the water fitness on, on this listing in here?
Yes, sir.
When is the proposed open and close date?
Uh, Memorial Day until, as long as we can keep lifeguard staff, 'cause a lot of them are high schoolers or going off to college.
Yeah, I think it passed, it was until.
Labor Day is the goal, but like, we'll try our best.
Yeah, I hope to shoot the Labor Day.
I would love that, yeah.
They go to two-a-days for football and they go to.
Do you remember, um, the NISD is starting two weeks early this year?
I think, I think my proposed calendar I have has this ending of August fourteenth.
That's later than it has been in the past.
Yeah, 'cause.
Well, we're open. We're open.
But, yeah.
I mean, the fact that we're open is great, right?
Yeah, I think, but you can always shoot farther, yeah.
Yes, I, I think, if I'm not mistaken, I'll see you guys.
When is the water ballet, when is that?
August seventh, I think.
You're teaching that bird?
I'm just, I'm just thinking of Caddyshack, so.
Oh, I thought you were gonna be teaching water ballet.
So NISD starts either the August seventh or fourteenth, I can't remember.
Gosh, blessed.
Well, so that they get a whole week off and all. Well, so that they get a whole week off in October and a whole week off in February this year, or this next season.
We don't even really have a good idea of what these proposed rates would change as far as the income, probably, because we don't really have a good accounting of...
No, and so the idea was it's not to make it unreasonable, but try to bring it up a little. I mean, the last rates was two thousand and fourteen. I mean, basically, everything's new out there, other than the surface of the pool. So all the plumbing is new, all the pumps are new. It's unreal. We've had to redo everything, so... Not that we're going to collect all the costs back, but...
Especially with the building that old, like, it's expected that it's going to always be in the red. We're just trying to close the gap.
Well, perhaps if we can double down on trying to create something that the citizens can enjoy out there, then at that point, we could refurbish the restrooms and, you know, do all of those things. That would be wonderful. Yeah. Yeah, it would be great if Navasota could host the Texas Games again. That would be...
I've been talking with some Mudcat's parents about that.
Yeah, yeah. We've done it before. It's great. It's great. There's some Mudcat mom right back there that served in the trenches with for many years.
Mr. Mayor, I am making motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number one zero two one dash two three, amending the code of ordinances, appendix A, fee schedule, article A four point zero 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 Parks and Recreation, section A four point oh oh nine, adopting the revised Parks and Recreation Municipal Pool Fees for the city of Navasota with an effective date of May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Amending code of ordinances, appendix A, with the addition of article A six point zero 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 miscellaneous fees, section A six point zero zero one F, credit card processing fees to cover the cost of credit card processing fees with an effective date of May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Do you want to add the addition of water fitness? Water fitness?
With the addition of adding fees for water fitness.
What was the fees, do you know?
Fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars, okay.
Any further discussion? Got a motion by Mr. Holt, second by Ms. Peterson.
By the way. She moved.
Oh, yeah, she did. Yes. By Ms. Peterson, second by Mr. Holt. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item carried. Item fourteen, the consent agenda. We have the minutes of April twenty twenty-three, court report for the month of April. Second reading of ordinance ten eighteen dash twenty-three, which is a zoning application submitted by JCLB Investments LLC. Property located at Dove Crossing to change zoning from A, from Article five R one A High Density Single Dwelling Unit, seven thousand square foot lot, residential district to Dove Crossing P U D, a planned unit development for the development of a five point oh four acre single dwelling unit subdivision. And the second reading of ordinance ten nineteen dash twenty-three, zoning and change application submitted by James C. and Dorothy Hassel for the property on County Road four twenty-four in Navasota, Grimes County, Texas, zoning change application request to change the zoning from Ag Open to McCon Lakes Estates, Phase Three P U D, amending the boundaries of the P U D for the development of a one point three one oh acre single dwelling unit subdivision. Property affected legally conscripted as A zero zero six two J White Size, tract fourteen dash three, tract nineteen dash three.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda, the consent agenda, which includes the minutes and municipal court records for the month of April twenty twenty-three and the second readings of ordinance number ten eighteen, twenty twenty-three, and the second reading of ordinance ten nineteen, twenty twenty-three. Second.
Motion by Mr. Gessler, second by Mr. Full, to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item carried. And with that, leave now.